Called the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Winnie County Community School District. It is April 1st, 2024. At 6:30 PM, we are in the Winnie County Large Group Lecture Hall. Meeting notices were sent to members of the press, members of the school board, and were posted on the front doors and door in the vestibules of district school buildings. This is a meeting of the board in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public hearing. There may be a time for public comment as indicated in the agenda. The meeting will also be available to watch live at www.youtube.com/winnicanni. Please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A roll call, please.
Stelsner.
Here.
Ladue. Veritch.
Here.
Keller.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Cundy, here, Hanson.
Here. Recognizing the administrative team, we have Mr. Jerabek, Mrs. Knapp, Mr. Katie, Mr. Schrader, Dr. Larson. That's it. And visitor recognition, I think we have one visitor. Hello? And you, you signed up there on the, okay. And there is no people that have signed up for the open forum, so we will move into the business part of the meeting. I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Cundy, second by Veritch to approve the consent agenda. I do want to thank Mr. Tyler Lee and Mrs. Andrea Fleece for the, for the coaching and the leadership that they've provided to our students. We will miss both of them in those roles, so thank you to them. Roll call, please.
Stelsner.
Aye.
Veritch.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Cundy, aye, Hanson.
Aye.
Middle school renovation, safety and security.
At your place, you have an updated layer of security bulletin? So this just goes through the variety of different layers of security that will be provided in our newly renovated middle school, along with information about some alternate bid choices that we need to make.
Can you please explain the color coding?
I'll do the best that I can. I'm so glad that Mr. Samolinski is in the audience. So if you don't mind if he helps us, I know it's outside of the agenda item. But essentially, in alternate bid number one, you can see that the vestibules are highlighted, the areas in the blue.
Okay.
And then the yellow areas are also highlighted, so those are areas within the office spaces.
Okay. I wasn't sure what the yellow and the blue meant, so, thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
So are these areas that are, because we do have the panic doors, right?
Yes.
So are these areas that are even within those panic doors as well?
They could be. When you look at the alternate bid number five, that has all the security film in all the classrooms. I believe that number was $400,000 on that alternate bid number five, and I think it's on the last page of the.
So in one through four, so.
One through four has all the lamp, the thicker laminate glass. So the base bid is for the 5/16ths to, a quarter to 5/16ths laminate glass, and the alternate bids are the 9/16ths alternate glass.
And that is just in the, is that throughout?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so, but just explain, where are the panic doors?
Um, okay, so.
Because those aren't going away.
No, those are not going away. Those essentially close off the academic wing. So when you look at the pictures of the middle school that's in your packet, before you enter those academic wings, those are where the panic doors are located. So again, that closes off that portion of the building to anybody that we don't want to enter that area.
Okay.
And then we do need a motion to approve these additional recommendations for the, the glass.
Can I, can I ask Ben a question? Ben, what are you seeing from other schools?
So, Oshkosh is more. All right, so Oshkosh, so I'm doing the new, I did the new Val Phillips and the new Webster Stanley, which is called Menominee. So they're more on the base bid side. So they do just regular glass in most of their classrooms and corridor areas. I'm also doing Manasha, which is building a new middle school. They are going to go with the 9/16ths laminate glass, kind of same, similar to what we're doing here at the middle school, proposing to do at the middle school.
Ben, are you seeing any of schools, whether schools you're working on or throughout the state of Wisconsin that you have knowledge of, that is going with that bullet resistant, or?
No.
And why is that?
From what I hear, and I said I'm not in a lot of the school forums, but it's expensive. So school districts are doing other things, like we talked about the layers of security. So they're doing that or enhancing their cameras. They just feel like the bullet resistant glass is not cost prohibitive for what they need. So it's something where they'd rather use the money to do technology or something else to help stop an intruder, do their layers of security, or whatever they want to do. Because once a person's inside the building, I mean, really, there's nothing that's going to stop them, so.
Thank you.
Peggy, just to bring it up, as I remember, when the bids came in, we had a little bit of fluctuation. That this still will fit in, that we don't have to find a source for additional dollars?
Correct.
Thank you. So then with the respect to the glass in a renovated middle, I make the motion to accept alternative bids number one, two, three, and four as presented.
Second. Motion by Cundy, second by Hanson to approve the motion to accept the alternate bids number one, two, three, and four as presented for a total cost of $33,318. Any other questions from the board? Roll call, please.
Veritch.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Cundy, aye, Stelsner.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye. We'll move on to flock cameras. I do want to just let the board know for items and the public for items seven through 15, these all came before the HR committee, and the HR committee brought forth the recommendations for these additional positions or upgrades of the, the positions. And with respect to those positions, we did hear from many of the department heads, and that provided rationale for why these either additional positions or upgraded positions were needed. So moving forward to the flock cameras. Do you want me to talk about that, Peggy, or?
Sure.
Okay, so Mr. Sorial, or Officer Chief Sorial came before the committee to ask for the school's financial support in mounting flock cameras, which are security cameras throughout the village, basically. And he was requesting that the school support three of those cameras, which would be positioned around the, the school property, but not necessarily on the school property. One was going to be more towards the elementary school, one was going to be out at the corner of Wolf Run and Lasley Point, and one was going to be at Ninth Avenue, if I remember correctly. And it was a $1,500 installment fee, one-time installment fee for each of the cameras, and then a $3,000 annual, I guess I would call it a maintenance fee, for lack of better terms. So it would be a $9,000 recurring annual fee to the district. The committee is recommending that we support half of the cost of one of the cameras and divide that cost with either the village or the town, depending on where that camera would be mounted. So we're recommending a $1,500 recurring annual fee for half, for half of one of the cameras and the $1,500 mounted fee.
Can I add?
Mm-hmm.
It should be noted that these, these cameras, first and foremost, they communicate with other, I guess, police entities throughout the state, and that was ultimately what helped catch the, the individual who committed the shooting in the village last fall, or last spring, I can't remember when that was.
Fall.
Fall. Anyway, however, Chief Sorial did go to the village to support these cameras, I believe, three to six of these cameras, and the village was unable to support it. And so he went out and fundraised money with local businesses for three cameras. And so that's why he came to the school district for the additional three. And that's kind of our thinking with, you know, we, we use taxpayers' money to, to support our schools, and we just felt if the village or the town's willing to go in on one with us, that would be feasible.
So Jill, what you're mentioning then is they actually got enough support to place four of them within around the community or district?
I believe it was three.
I think it's three.
And what we're saying is, you know, because we're taxpayer-funded, the village and the town is taxpayer-funded. If they're willing to, to support this, then we will go ahead and support one with them, and they can choose the location in and around the schools that they prefer.
And then the one that we support, if we approve, there would be an annual 1,500 or an annual 3,000 to our district?
Annual 1,500.
Okay.
But shared?
Yeah, shared with either the village or the town.
Okay, thank you.
But the 3,000 would be shared, so 1,500 would be our responsibility.
Okay.
Peggy, did you get a chance to talk to Chief Sorial? Has he communicated with either the village or the town?
Um, yes, I actually was just communicating with him within the last hour or so. He's hoping that it goes on the town agenda coming up. He's been working with one of the members there, so we're hoping for that. And I did not get a definitive answer if the village was a no or not, unless I missed a text message recently.
So just real quick, sorry, I'm trying to look up the numbers here and I'm struggling. So what would it be to us if we chose to do to ourselves?
Do to ourselves? So it's $3,000 per camera annually, and then there's a $1,500 one-time installment fee.
Thank you.
I, I will add, you know, we do have cameras all over our properties, so. And if there is ever an incident that the police have an interest in, as long as it doesn't breach student confidentiality, I mean, we do cooperate with them. The, the main purpose that Officer Sorial or Chief Sorial mentioned was there are, they're hoping to get cameras at a minimum at the entrances and exits into the community. And so we were kind of hypothesizing that if we only did the one, it'd probably be on Lasley and, and Wolf Run, because that, you go M in that direction, and then it sounds like they're going to do one on 1/16th towards Amro, and then, is it one?
One out, one out by Klein, or was that already one that's there? There was one out by Klein, I thought he said, Otto.
So.
Would make sense.
Yeah.
I guess my only thought, coming, coming at it from, you know, a school perspective, if we were able to help and have one, like Main Street and Third, and Main and Ninth, just because that's where all of our bus traffic goes, that's where a lot of our kid traffic goes. It also wouldn't be either way away from our buildings if people were here, did something and left. I personally feel like if there's something going on, or there's any kind of information that could possibly help solve something that happens, or keep a child from possibly being taken out of the area, I feel like $9,000 would be very minimal.
I sit on the town board, and our next meeting is April 18th. I'd like to move to table this item until the first meeting in May, if possible, so that I can get some feedback from the town to see if they would support financially supporting this as well. If anybody has any.
And that's perfectly fine if that's what you wish to do, otherwise you can make a motion contingent upon either the town or village supporting this as well, if that were to be the wishes of the board.
And Megan, to your point, we're, we're really hoping that the village realizes that there might be some responsibility on their part, too. That's why we decided not to do the three, hoping that maybe the village would, you know, come, come forward, too. It sounded to me like the support that Chief Sorial did get were from businesses in the community that, and, and so. So one camera was spread across multiple businesses, so that it wasn't going to be a financial burden, so. But, I mean, I, we can table it, I guess. I, I feel comfortable supporting the 1,500 at this point if it's, you know, and if the, the village or the town decide not to do it, then there, you know, there's not going to be a camera, I don't think.
I like the proposal that's been brought forward, and I feel as a district, we have responsibility for this as well. And so I would support the recommendation that's, that's brought forth.
Is that a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Motion by Cundy, second by Veritch to approve a $1,500 annual recurring fee and $1,500 installation fee for one flock camera. Contingent upon participation from either the village or the town. Any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Veritch.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Cundy, aye, Stelsner.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye. Request to increase Special Education and Academic Services Coordinator to full-time 12 months. It's a nine-month position right now. And as you can see in your information, there are several days during the summer that this position is needed for various duties, and so it was recommended that this just be moved to a full-time position. Questions from the board? Okay, motion?
I move to increase the Special Education and Academic Service Coordinator to full-time.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Megan to approve increasing the Special Ed and Academic Services Coordinator to full-time, and that would be effective July 1st?
No, I'm actually, it would start immediately.
Okay.
I mean, because she's working school year now, so.
Okay, okay. Roll call, please.
Keller.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Cundy, aye, Stelsner.
Aye.
Veritch.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye. Request to increase part-time school year library aide to full-time school year. This position would be in the middle school. Information in your packet about the rationale behind that. Any questions?
I was just curious more so, will this person obviously have the ability to cover the things that they're getting pulled away for, the technology type stuff? I just want to verify that that's what we're going to be looking for versus somebody to just do the library, per se, the physical library.
That is the intent of the position, as we're training new staff in the library area, to make sure that they have technical abilities. Obviously not, they're not going to be an expert like Dave and Mike and Julie, but have a skill set to help people with printers, probably clever touchboards. Integration. Thank you, Dana.
Is this a nine-month or 12-month? I can't.
It's a school year position.
School year.
So it's a half-time school year position right now, so we're asking it to go full-time school year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion to approve the increased part-time school year library aide to full-time school year.
Second.
Motion by Hanson, second by Veritch to approve the increase for the library aide to full-time school year. Roll call, please.
Peterson.
Aye.
Cundy, aye, Stelsner.
Aye.
Veritch.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye. Request to increase the Spanish teacher to full-time, to 100% contract. Right now, they are 40 to 60%, so this would go to 100% position.
I move to approve the request for a full-time Spanish teacher.
Second.
Motion by Veritch, second by Cundy to approve the request to increase the Spanish teacher to 100% contract. Questions? Roll call, please.
Cundy, aye, Stelsner.
Aye.
Veritch.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye. Request to add the WCAC Production Director 100% contract. This is the assistant position for right now, correct? Yes. So this, this is a position that would not only assist Mr. Phillips in the WCAC, but we're looking at a succession plan also. So right now, Mr. Phillips is putting in quite a few hours at our WCAC, and we would like to get him some help, so that we can hang on to him a little bit longer.
I'd just like to compliment, first of all, Mr. Phillips for the job that you've been doing for WCAC. I just have one question that I was thinking of through the day here, and that is, when we put this together, we were looking at additional time of use, as an example, from outside entities. I'm not sure if you wanted to come up or not. I know it's very widely used, but will that make it possible for each, and maybe even additional more usage, with having an extra individual to help you with that?
That, that would be the hope, is to try to increase some of the outside events that do come in. I know, again, we utilize the facility greatly, so finding extra time. It would be more looking at one-time, you know, event group coming in, maybe bringing in a music group that would do a concert on a Saturday night, could be a Friday night, we don't use a lot, other than musicals and times like that. It wouldn't be actually looking for other outside theater groups to come in and say, we can give you a week's worth of rehearsals and a week's worth of build, and a week's worth of performances. We don't have that kind of time open. But our hope was, when we originally opened the building and started, was that we could bring some music groups, comedians, different things in, and utilize the Performing Arts Center that way as well. And so our hope would be, with the extra help, we have somebody, whether I take on those responsibilities or this other person does, we would be able to work to recruit that, find the bookings. Does that mean we would have 12 events a year in there extra? Probably not. But looking at, you know, if we started within the first year and said, if we can do one a quarter, I think we would be successful one, first year of adding that in and build from there.
Thank you. I appreciate your time and efforts again, and I know that was some of the intent in the beginning, and I appreciate looking at that as we go forward, so, thank you.
Do we have cost comparison between what we're currently being paid out for temporary part-time compensation versus the full-time salary that we're looking to approve?
Not at this time. We don't know who this position might be, or who it, was it somebody with experience, somebody just graduating? So you don't really know. I would, the part-time help that we've had with a couple nice people has been pretty minimal. I mean, they've been very helpful, but as far as hours put in through the course of 12 months.
I move to approve the, the new WCAC Production Director.
Second.
Motion by Veritch, second by Cundy to approve the addition of a WCAC Production Director to 12-month, would be a 12-month, 12-month position. Roll call, please.
Stelsner.
Aye.
Veritch.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Cundy, aye, Hanson.
Aye. And then we have a job description to approve for that position, which is in your packet. So we need to approve that, or make any changes if needed.
So moved.
I'll second that. Motion by Veritch, second by Hanson to approve the job description for the WCAC Production Director. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Veritch.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Cundy, aye, Stelsner.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye. Request to add a K through five cross-categorical teacher.
I, I think that one of the main intentions of actually the K-5 and the 612 position is we have some pretty high-needs students, and I'd say, first and foremost, we're trying to avoid potentially having to send them to an alternative site. Sites like Richardson School in Appleton cost about $100,000, and that does not include transportation. So we're helping, we're hoping that by creating some extra help in classrooms and alleviate some of the pressures of these teachers, it will allow the student to stay in their home district. Not to mention caseloads are tough, and turnaround in these positions are quite high, and we're hoping, again, to provide some more support for these teachers, so that they can divide their caseload out a bit more would be helpful. And we're not at the 612 position, for the sake of, you know, interrupting again. On the 612 position, we also want to get our kids out in the community more and experience different job opportunities, so that position in collaboration with the current two teachers would be working, like, I'm, I'm not going to say that the current high school teachers might be the one taking the kids out more, but essentially, that's a part of our goal is to, with the three positions, to get our kids into the community more, into work, work stations and whatnot, to help ensure that they're going to be productive.
With these two positions, do you know how many students of the projected five we would be able to bring back and be able to provide programming for?
I don't know that we'll be able to bring all of them back. We'd like to think maybe one or two. There's a couple really high-needs kids who are being successful where they're at, and we would hate to disrupt that success. Again, the main purpose would be to not have at least two of our current students who are struggling right now move out to a different setting to pay those additional tuition costs.
Anything else from the board? Okay, I would make a motion to approve the addition of a K through five cross-categorical teacher.
Second.
Motion by Hanson, second by Peterson to approve K through five cross-categorical. Roll call, please.
Veritch.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Cundy. Aye, Stelsner.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye. And request for the six through 12 cross-categorical, I'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hanson, second by Keller. Motion by Hanson, second by Keller. Megan?
Yeah.
Okay. To approve the 6 through 12 cross-categorical teacher. Roll call, please.
I just wanted to add one thing before we do a roll call, and that is, from what Dr. Larson had indicated, the chance and opportunity for some of these individuals to actually get their work experience out there. We've had that years back, at times, when we had the small schoolhouse, I believe it was. And that's been quite some time ago. But that is an experience that's very rewarding, when some of these individuals get out to start to realize an occupation responsibilities, and then in some sense, understand the handling of monies, and, and just working out there in the public is just very nice for them to see. So, thank you.
I wanna add to that, too, is today we've added three special education, you know, focus, and I think that was a huge point of contention for a lot of community members. And I just wanna commend and whatever, congratulate, thank, I guess, the people that have put it together, is the word I'm looking for, is making sure that we, we are addressing some of the concerns that the constituents throughout the community have, have brought forth. And I wanna thank the community as well for bringing them to us, because it's, sometimes those things get overlooked, and I just think that we're addressing that.
Thank you. Roll call?
Keller.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Kundi, I Stelzner.
Aye.
Verich.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye. St. Mary's Parking Lot Lease Agreement.
This lease is for a dollar, so it's really just more a legal document to protect the church and the district. So, we've been using that parking lot for pickup since it's been around. And again, it just came to, I'll say, the church's attention, that we needed some sort of agreement in place. And it wasn't about the money, it was just about the agreement, so hence why we would pay a dollar a year for our families to be able to pick up at that lot. If we weren't able to, as many of you know who have to travel around the elementary school before and after school, it would be very inconvenient, because there's not a lot of parking or areas for pickup, being the school's right in the middle of the village.
I'll make a motion to approve the very costly $1 St. Mary's Parking Lot Lease Agreement.
Second.
Motion by Keller, second by Kundi, to approve the St. Mary's Parking Lot Lease Agreement.
Just, just as a point of clarification, Tony, Tony has looked over the lease, not the same that the church is trying to work us over, but just making sure Tony has seen it for the dollar. All right, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Peterson.
Aye.
Kundi, I Stelzner.
Aye.
Verich.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye. Administrative reports, we did receive those in a separate email from the district. Are there any additions from administration or questions from the board? And board reports, any communications?
Yes, I have one, a letter from Kevin Labs, and he works in our Facilities Department. His mother-in-law has passed away, and the letter reads, "My wife and I wanted to say thank you so very much for the thoughtful and kind words and the gift of money. It sure helps during the time of our grieving. We are so grateful to be part of the Winnie County Community School District family. Again, thank you so much for being there. Kevin and Shelley Labs."
Thank you. Committee reports, Human Resources and Finance, we did meet to go over these various job requests or position requests, and other than that, we have not met. Public Relations and Marketing. You're, you're gonna be scheduling one, Dr. Larson?
We're working on the newsletter draft, so that'll be coming out, as well as the groundbreaking ceremony. Mr. Schrader and I did receive some information regarding that, like invites and special invites for people that we want to strongly suggest they come, because we'd really like to redo, reenact that picture of the board members from 1975, and then have the current board members, so we have some pictures to take. So, we have some nice opportunities. Myron's helping with those drawings and invites, but I will share with the PR Marketing Committee, as well as the draft of the newsletter when I receive it, so...
Okay. And policy?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Kundi, second by Stelzner, to move into executive session. We don't have minutes, right?
Right.
Okay. Under statute 19.85 sub 1, sub C, considering continuing employment compensation of public employees over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility.
Thanks for coming, Ben.
The board will move into open session and may take action on items discussed in closed session. Roll call, please.
Kundi, I, Stelzner. Verich.
Aye.
Keller.